Good evening and welcome to the Lowell School Committee meeting of February 13, 2019. Could we please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you do the roll, please? Mr. Houghey?
Here.
Ms. Delay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Nutter?
Here.
Mayor Samaras? Mr. Dakota?
Yeah.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Six present, one absent.
The first item on the agenda is the Special Order of Business, and that is the appointment of Janine M. Durkin as Superintendent of Schools. Motion to approve the appointment of Janine Durkin as Superintendent of Schools by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Durkin. Ms. Martin.
Nutter.
Mr. Nutter.
Off and running.
You had the Jerry name part of it right.
I just wanted to say, it's my understanding that there are some questions around the actual wording in the contract, so if we could defer this to our next meeting. I know we're all, we've had the conversations and we want to move forward, but if we could just defer acting on the contract, which I believe impacts this issue, the actual contract, which is later in the agenda, and the secretary selection, which I believe is also in here. If we could take those three items, hold them in abeyance, and defer them to our next meeting, I guess I'd make that in the form of a motion.
So the motion is to defer this item and the other two items regarding the superintendent contract and the secretary, named till the next meeting, seconded by?
Can we?
Mr. Nutter? Mr. Nutter? Did you have a comment?
For discussion, I guess, what are the reasons we're delaying this?
It was my understanding that there are questions within the actual document about the wording of some of the, like when the term would begin, whether it would begin at that July timeframe or November. So there were a number of different questions that had come up during review that needed to be kind of nailed down before we could move forward with the contract as it was published. I don't think there are any issues of real substance, but it's just the wording of it, again, to my understanding.
I agree. Excuse me, ma'am.
Mr. Houghey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Ms. Martin. So what are we looking at right now, though, to defer number three, obviously, right?
Three, one.
Three, one.
Five, one.
Five, one.
And ten, one.
Ten, one.
Any other concerns or thoughts? Do we need a roll call on that? Roll call?
Mr. Houghey?
This is on Ms. Martin's motion, correct?
Yes, to defer.
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, approved.
Now we have the minutes from the last school committee meeting. I have a, I'm looking for a motion to accept and place on file the February 6, 2019 minutes of the Lowell School Committee meeting. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. So we're deferred five, one. Next, we're at five, two. Approval of contract for Billy Joe Turner as school business administrator and assistant superintendent for finance and operations from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2022. Motion to approve the contract by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Houghey. Comments, questions? Roll call?
Excuse me?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Houghey?
I'd like to say this. I know you've only been here a while, Ms. Turner. I'm going to support this. I'm the lead voter here tonight. I just know that you've brought a lot of, how do I want to put it, morale to the administration and to the offices and all the people that are working up there. A lot of people have spoke in favor of you that I really respect, and I'm excited to say you're on board now, because I really am excited to see what you can do for us. What you've already done, I'm waiting to see what you're going to do for Lowell, so I'm going to vote for you, and I just want my colleagues to hear that before we do vote.
Thank you. Ms. Delay?
Thank you, Madam. For me, I have a tough time, nothing against Ms. Turner. Just looking at... Don't we need to have a search for this position? I am in favor of doing a search, doing it the right way, and... So for me, I think we should do what we should do during the search, and did we do a search when we hired Ms. Turner?
I believe we did look for a replacement. It was an interim position.
Right. For me, I feel like it was like an emergency interim hiring, which I'm grateful that Ms. Turner came aboard, and I did vote for her immediately back then. But then I thought that the process would be redo the search and have her... And also, the... It's, I feel, you know, it's, we will have a new superintendent and the contract, the three-year contract and all that. I feel that I have no problem extend one year, but to have three years and the salary... The salary is also another thing that we will offer 14% raise, and by doing so, we will have to, what would be the deputy superintendent's salary going to be and the other assistant superintendent's salary going to be? So because of what I said, I am reluctant to vote on this.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Just to be clear, generally, for the only position that the committee is involved in a search would be for the superintendency. We're not allowed to get involved in the hiring of any other position. What is unique is for assistant superintendent positions, the business, the chief business officer, and the special ed director, we do have the right to approve. So generally, all of those positions, the search is always conducted by the superintendent, and then it is brought before this committee for us to approve. We don't, we're not involved in the search, we're not involved in the recruiting or anything like that. It's simply brought to us for approval. We can vote yea or nay. That's the extent of our influence. So having gone through that process where the previous superintendent brought this, conducted the search, brought this person forward as an interim, I, for one, have been extremely impressed by the performance of Ms. Turner. I think she has done extraordinarily good work for our district, and I am extremely pleased that we can move forward knowing that we have her in place for the next three years, which I think is going to be critically important to us as we tackle some very, very important issues where finances are going to really be the be-all and end-all in a lot of ways. Thank you.
Mr. Houghey?
I just want to add one more thing. Nothing will change my mind tonight, Ms. Turner. I'm definitely voting for you. But what Dominic said when we had Mr. Frisch here, when he came in, he did get an amount of money that was paying him more than assistant superintendents. So it did become an issue when we had to give raises to everybody else. But right now, the most important person sitting in front of me is you, and then we'll work on the other issues later, the superintendent, but and the HR director. Again, I want to just second what Ms. Martin said about what you've done since you've been here. I'm blown away what you've done with the administration, because I love my top five. I call it the top five. They do all the work. We just sit here and vote. It's kind of easy for us, to be honest with you. But I'm not going to say much more other than, I can hear what Dominic's saying on a few issues. He's not totally wrong, but that's his business right now, and I respect what you said, Dominic. But again, I'm the lead voter, Dominic, so I'm not going to play with you. I'm voting for Ms. Turner. So I'd like to move that we vote for her.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you. Thank you. Just quickly, and I do support this motion, I think with a new superintendent coming on board at some point, it would be very helpful for that administrator to have someone in the know as Ms. Turner is. So having to go back to square one would be extremely difficult for that person coming on board, to not have someone that's really the right-hand person to be that person that... I'm sorry to use the Gal Friday, but it's, I think it's important that they have someone that's going to be extremely in the know to help them go forward. And again, I agree with many of the colleagues that you've done a remarkable job, and I am very, very glad to support this.
Roll call?
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Five yeas, one nay, one absent, approved.
So we are at permission to enter. We entertain a motion to approve the permission to enter by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Nutter. Any comments, questions? Roll call.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay, I mean, one absent, approved.
So now, under memorials, we have a memorial for Mary Alice Hoffman Nelson, mother of Casey Nelson, ICTS manager. We darken chambers and have a moment of silence, please.
At the request of Mayor Samaras, he has asked me to, once again, as we did last week because of Mr. Dakota not being here, he would like to be here for the discussion of this, so if we could, to the March 19 meeting.
So that's a motion by Mr. Nutter to defer?
I'm sorry, Ms... No, not the next meeting, because I won't be here.
Okay, so the motion by Mr. Nutter is to defer this to the March 19 meeting, seconded by Mr. Houghey. Can we keep you on as the second?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Motion 7.2 by Connie Martin requesting that the school committee launch its search for a new superintendent of Lowell Public Schools. Immediate action should include posting the revised job posting and appropriate journals and other publications, contract with Mass Association of School Committee to manage the search, solicit community involvement from a range of stakeholders for participation in a blue ribbon screening committee, establish a timeline for deadlines, meetings, interviews, site visits, and final selection of a qualified candidate. Seconded by? Mr. Nutter. We have registered speakers on this. I don't know if Ms. Martin would like to speak first, or we'll have the speakers first?
Okay. I did reach out to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. They are the statewide association for school committee members. We had contracted with them to conduct our last search, and I thought that they ran a very good process. Personally, I think that we need it even more at this point, because we simply, you know, our HR office served a role, excuse me, during our last search, where they were collecting resumes and doing some of the initial work with potential applicants. We simply don't have the manpower in that office to do that right now. Having spoken with Glenn Kuchar, who is the executive director of MAS-C, he himself has offered to personally conduct the search, to take the lead in doing it for Lowell. He had offered to come this evening to speak, but unfortunately, they had their monthly board meeting, so he wasn't able to attend. But he is very willing to come out and speak to the committee and to the community about the process. I had included in the packet that was available their proposed contract. It's really almost to the letter what we had gone through the last time, what we had, what our participation was the last time. It also included the actual advertising piece that MAS-C had created for us the last time. That was included in the packet, and it's actually, the timeline, mayor, is where we're at right now. If we begin right away, we can really function in the same, I believe, with very close to those same deadlines. As a, you know, the motion, obviously, is to enter into this contract so we can begin that process. I would, with the support of my colleagues, recommend that we try to plan a personnel subcommittee during the week of vacation, perhaps, so that we could have Mr. Kuchar come out, be able to speak directly with the committee, and again, with any members of the community, to kind of lay out the guidelines and kind of the process. He can do that personally, which I think would be extremely helpful, and then we can hopefully move forward and get the process started. You know, we do already have an approved job description, so we can begin with that. The actual advertising that MAS-C does is a package that includes professional journals as well as local papers and regional papers, but also those very specific journals that only superintendents read. Clearly, a very select group of publications. So that would be kind of, you know, moving forward, that would be my, the motion as it stands is to enter into this contract. For those who may not have had a chance to see it, it does total at about $16,000, which includes all the advertising costs, and that is a package. And that is actually at the high end. There's a $2,500 fee that's in there for expenses, kind of as they go, which may or may not get fully expended. But having just agreed to a $14,000 contract for our HR director, I think a $16,000 contract to aid us in our search for a superintendent is extremely reasonable. So that would be, I guess, I would say, first, I would be looking for support on the actual motion, and then perhaps we can discuss the feasibility of hosting a personnel subcommittee to take the next steps. I'd welcome the comments from the community.
Thank you. So at this time, we want to invite members of the public who have signed up and would like to speak to us on this issue, and I would turn that over to Madam Secretary to call you up to the podium. We do have a three-minute limit. We ask that you keep your comments within three minutes. Thank you.
Hope Anderson.
Anderson, and I live at 128 Warren Street, number 21. I really appreciate the thoroughness of the process that is proposed in this motion. I just want to underscore the importance of input from the community. So much as that is built into the process, I appreciate it. I have a few concerns that have been brought to my attention, and I just was hoping that they could get resolved before launching into something that may not, you know, have these questions resolved first. For example, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees managing the search on page six of their document under community and staff involvement, it lists what community outreach is limited to, and I just wanted to make sure that those were not the only forms of community outreach that the community would be allowed to participate in if MAS-C is overseeing the search. So for example, it says they will conduct focus groups and compile a report to help guide the process, define the credentials and profile, and identify the priorities of the people, et cetera. I'm summarizing. And I would just hope that that's not the only type of community involvement that's allowed, and I was also hoping that there could be more community involvement prior to, I mean, I know time is of the essence if you want to try to do a thorough search before next year, but before this fall, but I was just hoping that the community could have more input into the actual creation of the job announcement as well, because I think that's really important, that this whole process be guided by community involvement. Even though this may have worked in the past, I just think it's really important to have representation of the different facets of the community in the Lowell school system and in the hiring process, and I hope that best practices can be followed, and if that means taking a little more time and making sure that the community is able to participate in the process, then I hope that you can take that into consideration. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Just to answer some of your questions, in terms of the job description, we did host a personnel subcommittee exclusively for the opportunity for the public to come and tell us what they wanted, what changes they wanted. I think we had, you know, a number, a small number of people had attended, but they offered great suggestions that were incorporated into this new job description, particularly around the issues of diversity and cultural competencies, which I think are very important for whoever comes into this position as our new superintendent. In terms of, again, including our community in some different ways, I really look at the Blue Ribbon Screening Committee as a place where that happens. Historically, it's been very representative of different organizations across the community, parent groups, different educational institutions. We've worked very hard to ensure that our, that those Blue Ribbon Committees really did represent and offered an opportunity for people to participate, so I certainly would anticipate us doing that again. I think we, and one other item that had come up, and I have to be honest, I don't quite remember, it might have even been from that personnel subcommittee, we did talk about even just incorporating a simple survey that would allow us to survey all of our parents, give them an opportunity to respond with priorities, with concerns they may have, so that there's at least one more way that people can communicate what their priorities are for a superintendent. I'd certainly be open to other concrete suggestions, and simply by using MAS-C does not mean that we're limited in any way. It's our search, it's the, the school committee is responsible for every aspect of it, so we can chart that out. So, you know, great new ideas are always welcome. Thank you. Nicole Burnier?
Hello, Nicole Burnier, 60 Hawthorne Street in Lowell, in the Highlands. I just want to speak out a little bit about kind of my perspective on the superintendent search. Over the last 10 years, this district has suffered, I believe, due to the instability in that leadership role. As a parent and active community member and a taxpayer, I find this to be somewhat concerning. My husband and I moved to Lowell 15 years ago, and over the last several years, our enthusiasm for the city has really grown, and there's so much going on here. It's exciting, and I think you all would agree. I think it is fair to say that our public school system is a really integral key to making our good city a great city, and I think that starts with some really solid making our good city a great city, and I think that starts with some really solid leadership. We are at a critical juncture with our community and our city, and we need to find a strong, competent, committed, and dynamic leader for our school system, someone who can take this district and essentially the city to the next level. Our most important citizens are children, and I think we really need to pay attention to that. Our next superintendent, I feel strongly, must be someone who understands the unique needs of this gateway city. This should be an individual that will stay the course, someone that recognizes the needs and wants for diversity within the school system, someone that will advocate for the district on municipal, state, and federal levels, and oversee and build the long-term plans that this district has created. And from my perspective, to reinstate some confidence into this school system, making our public schools in Lowell equitable and equal between all the schools, and make it a first choice for all the students and families in this district. I'm urging you tonight to consider several key factors as you move forward with the district's search for a superintendent. I think you'll hear reflected in some of what Mrs. Martin was saying, and also Hope. Please perform a rigorous and comprehensive search for the position, even if it requires allowing for an interim position. I think it is critical that you allow the right time to find the right candidate that's going to see us through the next six, 10 years. I like the, I like the idea of the Blue Ribbon Screening Committee, and I really love to see some follow-through with that. As part of the process, and this is kind of touching on what Ms. Martin was saying, I think it would be really important to offer an online, some kind of survey that can reach all parents and include them in the conversation. Not everyone has the ability to come to these meetings or focus groups or things like that, but I think that we have, with all, you know, online options, that's a great way for a lot of people to communicate to all of us, to you, what they want. And lastly, be transparent and inclusive. Please give families, parents, and students a voice. Involve community members, involve community organizations and leaders of the city, involve the teachers, principals, and other people that are part of the administration to be part of the process. Thank you.
Paul Georges.
Paul Georges, president of the United Teachers of Lowell. This is from what, and maybe Ms. Martin can explain a little further, this is a much different process than had been laid out in previous years. I've been part of screening committees since 1993, and there was always a Blue Ribbon Committee involved and so on, and appears in this case, the grading, if you want, of the applicants is in the hands of fewer people. I understand the input, that, you know, you're looking for input from parents and concerned citizens, but is this going to eliminate the Blue Ribbon Committee as it had been done before? I didn't see it specifically referred to in the proposal.
Ms. Martin?
If I could, it is specifically mentioned in the motion.
But in the text, it is...
In the, in the contract, when I spoke with Mr. Kucher, I was very clear that we were going to be using the same Blue Ribbon kind of structure that we had in the past. We talked about, you know, kind of going through to determine how, you know, what the specific agencies would be that are represented, that would need to be, you know, decided by the committee as a whole. But to my way of thinking, it's the, it would be the same basic process, that initial screening being done by MASC just for qualifications. And then, all those qualified candidates would then be brought to the screening committee, the Blue Ribbon Screening Committee, to do the first pass, and then ultimately, again, it's up to the committee, but then we would make the decision of, we want the top three or the top five or the top eight.
Yeah, the procedure ordinarily would be to sort of limit it down to 10, depending on how many applicants were there, and then the Blue Ribbon Committee would take a look at it, and if you said you needed three, it would be three, if it was five, it was five, however that worked.
And that would be a committee.
And if it was something really close, sometimes we'd communicate back to you and say, well, can you take six? You know, that kind of deal. I am a little concerned, I just want to bring up something that I brought up at the subcommittee meeting a couple of weeks ago. One of the issues with the Blue Ribbon Committee at the time, the last time that this went through, was there were 22 applicants that had put in for the position of superintendent. The Blue Ribbon Committee only saw 10. There was a process by which there was not necessarily, how can I put it, crystal clear on how 22 became 10, and there were questions made by the Blue Ribbon Committee about what the criteria was. Now, I understand, it would seem to me that the releasing the resumes to the Blue Ribbon Committee in total, my understanding is, in some cases, the school committee doesn't even see all the 22 applicants, and it would seem to me that you could do that by redacting names and specific information if there was any concern about confidentiality, so that more people, let's say, have the opportunity to become aware of all the resumes. Now, I understand if someone isn't qualified, and that's a different, that's a different issue, but the transparency issue of it, I think, is enhanced if you have at least the full committee looking at all the resumes with proper redactions if necessary to protect the innocent, if you want, or people who don't necessarily want their names out there as applying for a position, and perhaps the same thing with the Blue Ribbon Committee. Sure, sure, that's what I was asking.
Again, this committee controls how the process goes. I was not aware of that when that was going on, I, so I didn't know that that had happened. My understanding and my belief, which I would advocate for here with my colleagues, is that the screening that would happen is a strict qualification screening. Everyone who meets the qualifications as stated in the, in the job description would be forwarded to the screening committee, and this is language that we give to MASC, so they have to abide by what we say, would go to the screening committee. Again, I believe based on open meeting law and all that, the reason for that is that then the Blue Ribbon Screening Committee is the only group that has, that has the opportunity to interview in, in a private session before the school committee even knows, you know, who the criteria, who the candidates are. So they're held to executive session, you know, responsibilities, so that all of those qualified candidates would go to the Blue Ribbon Screening Committee. Once they were then forwarded to this committee, then they become public information, who the individuals are. So to my way of thinking, I think that's the smoothest way to do it, if it meets, and I think it meets what you're trying to accomplish.
It is, it is what I'm trying to accomplish.
Okay, there you go, look at us.
And looking, and trying to get the best possible candidate that we can out there, and assurances that everybody knows everybody knows, because when you shrink from 22 to 10, the question is, who are the 12? And that was some of the questions that were asked. We didn't bring that up at that time, you know, and we obviously had confidentiality issues that we still adhere to today, as far as those questions. The only other thing that I would say is, and I brought this up at the subcommittee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I think, I think different school committee members over their careers here at various times have shown a belief that working collaboratively, where collaborative teams can work together in individual schools, has been a high priority. It's where our greatest results, sustainable results have been achieved in individual schools. Not every leader feels that way. Not every leader's leading style is more collaborative in nature and wanting to share sort of that position of making policy or making, let's put it this way, steps in, where they empower teachers to be able to become critical thinkers and critical creators of environments that grow educational ability, okay? The best way that we can educate students and impact their lives. And obviously, we all understand we have a very demanding, demanding but rewarding population that we educate every day. It's the complexities of being in a gateway city with such a diverse population, but that's one of the most enriching things. I would say our teachers and our paraprofessionals and our administrators are uniquely talented by having this sort of baptism of fire, if you want to put it, by being in a, in a school district that has so much, so much diversity, but also richness. I would hope that would be a priority in selecting the next superintendent of schools that would sort of communicate that to principals and administrators across the district, that collaboration is the key, sustained growth and sustained excellence in public education. It's been proven again and again and again, it's not my word, I believe you all believe that, and have seen it in action in Lowell, and I hope that we're able to emulate that going forward for our students and the city of Lowell. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Howie?
Before you leave, can I ask him a question myself? Because I just want to, I have a problem with one part of it when you said, I remember you at the meeting at the Butler School. When I see the MASC being in charge of managing, managing this search, I don't have a problem with them doing that, because I believe they'll get more people involved to run for it, but you mentioned that we had like 21 or 22 candidates, and we lost, let's say, 10, and then 11 came back to the Blue Ribbon Committee.
Well, we had, we had 22, but 10 were advanced to the Blue Ribbon Committee for consideration. The criteria by which the 12 were eliminated was never quite clear, was never clear to members of the Blue Ribbon Committee.
And that's where I have a problem right now. I believe the, before anybody's eliminated, we should know every one of them, the school committee. That's how I feel. I'd go to the extremes and say, we should be the Blue Ribbon Committee. We need to change things, and I just want you to know that, Paul. We need to change things when things like that happen, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this motion before we take a roll call? Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This, this motion is, you know, I am supportive of the search, of course, and just give me some, what does it mean by, by managing the search? Does that mean now we hire MASC as a search firm, or is that what it means?
Basically, they'd be the one who'd be collecting, they'd be doing the advertising and recruiting for the position, they'd be accepting the resumes, and then forwarding them on to the Blue Ribbon Commission, and then the Blue Ribbon Commission would be forwarding them on to this committee to make final decisions. So this committee would still be responsible for public interviews, we'd still be responsible for conducting site visits, reference calling, we'd, the committee still makes the hire. Basically, MASC would be functioning as a, as a independent contract that would just manage the paperwork process, and they do do this across the state.
Is that the same as the search firm that we've been looking for, hiring the search firm?
In some ways, it will be serving the same purpose. With the HR director, we'll look, we had gone forward with a firm that specializes in HR hiring, in hiring HR professionals. MASC is a specialist in hiring superintendents.
But don't we suppose to have three, at least three quotes, and we're going to look at them before we decide to hire them?
I, sorry, I know Ms. Turner had gone through this question with the other one. My understanding is that there, this is a, there aren't any other firms that do this, that do the superintendent searches, but I, in terms of bidding, if you could, tell me if I'm right.
Ms. Turner?
So again, it's dependent upon the cost. If it's something that is between $10,000 and $50,000, the Chapter 30B procurement law requires us to just seek quotes, so if you wanted to, we could seek a couple of quotes on this process. If it's over $50,000, which is doubtful, then that's when you would have to do the RFP process.
So if that's the case, can, can we pass this motion into, we just say, you know, the element of this is to search, of course, we're going to vote for that, and then the contract and the Ribbon, Blue Ribbon Committee, we vote on them separately? Would that be?
Excuse me if I could?
Sure.
I believe that it's over $10,000, that you would have to get bids. This quote is under $10,000. It becomes $16,000 for the advertising costs.
Yes. Actually, yeah.
So we have to go out to bid, more have we gone out to bid and passed with, for previous superintendent searches, when you have used MASC, you were not required to go out to bid because the cost is under the $10,000.
And I believe there's also the, this is basically a service that we receive from them because we're members. We pay a membership fee every year, the district, to belong to MASC, so we're just contracting with them, again, under that $10,000 number, to provide a service that they provide to us as a member.
Okay, so, so at least could we just, at least just vote on the...
Sure, if you'd like to separate out, so we take a vote on the contract with MASC, a contract, a vote on the Blue Ribbon Commission, and then a vote on posting. You want to do those three? Posting the position is one vote, voting for the contract is a second vote, and then voting for the Blue Ribbon Commission is a third vote. I'm fine with that.
So is that a friendly amendment to the motion? We're going to break Ms. Martin's motion up into three.
It's going to be three separate motions.
All right, any other comments before we move on these different motions? Mr. Howie, you've spoken a couple of times, and I'm going to...
I spoke once. I think I can speak twice on a motion.
Well, I wanted to give Mr. Dakota a chance, just trying to move across the room a little bit.
No problem. Thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
I'll defer to you if you want, if, okay. Does the school committee have an opportunity to also speak or be part of the conversation that we have with MASC in terms of what we're expecting from them? Do we all sit down with them?
Ms. Martin, if you'd like to answer that?
As I had said earlier, what I'd recommend is that we try to schedule a time for a personnel subcommittee, maybe next week, when Mr. Kucher could come out, speak to us as a committee, and then also be able to include the public if they wanted to participate as well. But it's definitely all about the communication, it's not, you know...
Right, and I think at that time, you could also address some of the concerns about how they screened out those first...
Absolutely, yeah, we could definitely have that.
Right.
Sorry, Mr. Dakota, continue.
And the, and the other question I have is about the Blue Ribbon Committee. Who makes that selection?
I believe, Ms. Martin, if you'd like to answer that?
Again, that's a decision that's made by this committee. So what would be, I think, most advantageous would be if we can schedule this personnel subcommittee meeting, every member of the committee, you know, can be part of that, and we can go from, the previous list was included, I believe, in the packet that we received, I believe it was included in there, if not, we could, we can definitely find it and get it out, and I'd use that as a starting point, and then each committee member, we have to vote on each category.
Because I have a strong feeling that I think we should have a new Blue Ribbon Committee, new people that have never been on the Blue Ribbon. I really think that, I think we need to get fresh, new blood on that committee going forward. I think whatever teachers that have been on shouldn't be on that again.
It's interesting.
I think we should have different teachers, and, and, and community people as well, because I think it's really important to get different viewpoints of the, so that's...
Yeah, we could definitely make that decision at that personnel subcommittee as a, as a, as a motion or whatever.
Thank you. Mr. Nutter?
First of all, I am 100% in agreement with you on that, Mr. Dakota. I think we need to make sure that we have as many new faces and new voices as possible. You know, we've always done things certain ways, we don't have to do them that way. I don't understand why we need to break this into three separate motions. Under, I mean, the bidding law is very clear, we don't have to go out to bid, this is a service that we're contracting with. Advertisement is a totally separate thing, these people are more than qualified, and, I mean, I just don't, I, we need to move this forward, I'm all in favor of the personnel subcommittee meeting next week, but I just don't understand, there's, there's no reason why we need to break this into three separate motions.
I believe the maker of the motion has agreed to break it up in response to her colleagues, so I don't see any harm in doing it, we've, the maker of the motion doesn't have a problem. Mr. Howie, did you have any final comments before we move on these?
Not anymore, because I like that idea of breaking it up so we can talk about the Blue Ribbon Committees and all those issues. So now that, I will support it now, the way Ms. Martin approached everything. I have no problem with supporting the motion.
And I remind you all, we have an opportunity to have a deeper conversation with Mr. Kucher when he comes to the district, so that would be another time.
Okay, thanks.
So if we could, we're going to break it up, so we're going to need a new second for each aspect, so the first motion, I'm sorry? I know, each motion will be a new motion by Ms. Martin with a new, needed additional second. So the first motion, requesting the school committee launch its search for a new superintendent of Lowell Public Schools, posting the revised job description in appropriate journals and other publications. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Nutter. Roll call.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, approved.
Okay. Motion number two by Ms. Martin. Requesting the school committee contract with the Mass Association of School Committees to manage the search, solicit community involvement from a range of stakeholders for participa, the Blue Ribbon Committee is gonna be the second one, right? For a range of stakeholders.
Yeah, that would be the third one, yeah. So first is to enter into the contract.
Right. And this, okay, so this is just to enter into the contract. This is to enter into the contract with Mass Association of School Committees, seconded by Mr. Nutter. Roll call.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Five yeas, one nay, one absent, approved.
And the third motion by Connie Martin, requesting the school committee develop a Blue Ribbon Screening Committee, establish a timeline for deadlines, meetings, interviews, site visits, and final selection of a qualified candidate. Seconded by Mr.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat, have Ms. Martin create the Blue Ribbon, you said?
No. That the school committee.
Okay.
Requesting that the school committee determine a Blue Ribbon Screening Committee, establish a timeline for deadlines, meetings, interviews, site visits, and final selection of a qualified candidate. The school committee will determine that. Seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, approved.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
If I could, since I believe I am going for a personal record of number of motions at a meeting. If I could make an additional motion requesting that the administration poll for a personnel subcommittee for next week, I can forward the information. I'll check in with Mr. Kucha tomorrow, but also connect him with administration. You can let me know how to do that, to get a time that's convenient for him as well as for the rest of the committee. But we will, if we can certainly try to get this done next week, I think that would be a great start for us. Thank you.
Motion to poll the members for a subcommittee meeting, seconded by Mr. Nutter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So now we are on to the Subcommittee Reports, Joint Finance and Transportation Subcommittee. And I believe we're, I don't know if Mr. Nutter would like to report on the, we did already talk about it.
We did, so I'm just gonna.
So can we just say the motion is by Mr. Nutter?
To accept his report of progress.
And seconded by Mr. Dakota. All those in favor? Motion passes. Now we are at the reports of the superintendent. This is a response to my motion of April 4th regarding schools' outdoor play space. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. I'll ask Assistant Superintendent Billy Joe Turner to share with you her updates. So we sent out a survey to each of the schools, asking for the use frequency of a playground, whether it was on-site or off-site, whether it had access to a bathroom, whether it was well-maintained, how many play structures, the type of protective surfacing, and whether it's updated to current standards, whether it was in disrepair, safety concerns, and other dangerous equipment questions. In summary, 20 of them, we've received 20 responses. One school had access to two parks, so the responses are based on a 21-response number. Of the 20 schools, nine had on-premise parks, nine had nearby parks, and two had no park access. Of the nine schools that did not have a park on premise, on the premises, four used the park daily, three went occasionally, and two stated infrequent use. On the contrary, all nine schools that had a park on the premises used it daily. Of the 20 schools, 11 were described as well-maintained while seven were not. Those that were not well-maintained were described as littered with glass, animal feces, and unemptied trash. Of the 20 schools, five described the parks as not in disrepair, whereas 11 stated the park had chipped paint, chain ladders with S-hooks, broken safety panels, no latches on the fence, holes in the asphalt, and holes in stairs. Of the 20 schools, four had no safety concerns, while eight had concerns with the equipment, witnessed to illicit activity, or too many outside users. It was open to the public. Of the 20 schools, the following summarize the number of play structures. Four had zero play structures, three had one, three had two play structures, three had three play structures, two had four, two had five, zero had six play structures, and one had seven. Overall, there's no uniformity with the access to parks and playgrounds.
Thank you for that report. Any comments or questions for my colleagues? Mr. Houghey?
Yes. When we say outdoor play spaces, we're talking roughly right around our schools, connected to our schools, correct? Yeah, so I'm not gonna badger this issue, but this is a great report because we have a lot of schools that I've seen so far where the gates aren't even locked. They can't lock because they're broke. So this is just one of those, another maintenance issue that we have, but very important one because some of the gates in our play areas, the kids can run out. I don't want to tell the schools that I've seen it, but I have seen it. So I think it's a great report. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
I'd agree with my colleague, actually, because I do think this is important for us to note. You know, the reality is, is that our schools are in different environments, and some will have, have different access than others. I think the real, one of the real disappoint, I mean, it's an overall very disappointing that the parks are in this current state. I think it's something that needs to be addressed, just like every other maintenance issue. I mean, we are drowning in these problems. And it, you know, so I think it absolutely is important. And I think a key thing is that for those nine, I believe nine schools, who have access to a public, a public park space, but just aren't using it because it's not safe, or it's not, you know, for whatever reasons, I mean, that's a lost opportunity. That's, you know, for schools that don't have the access, we need to come up with, in those school communities, I'm sure are already, coming up with creative solutions where they can kind of make the best of their, their physical situation. But for the ones who have the opportunity and can't take advantage of it because of the, the state of the park space, I mean, that for me is the biggest loss that we can see in this. So I agree. I mean, I don't have any immediate, you know, solution to recommend because I know that this goes on to a list that is already catastrophic. But it is something that we need to pay attention to because it, they can play, those kind of play spaces can play such an important role in the day-to-day functioning of our schools. Thank you.
Mr. Nutter?
Do you have this information broken down with more specifics? So the schools that responded, the parks that are involved?
Right.
Could I make a recommendation that we forward those reports to the City Council Subcommittee on Facilities and the City Council Parks and Rec Subcommittee? So that they are aware of these issues also?
Second on that motion by Mr. Dakota? The motion is to get a report that gives us more details about the schools that are lacking. I mean, that was the motion.
The motion is to forward this report.
Forward, oh, this report. Oh, I thought you wanted.
With additional detail.
With additional details.
Yeah.
About the schools and the parks.
To the City Council Facilities and Parks and Rec Subcommittee. Rita chairs, Council of Mercy chairs the Parks and Recreation. And I believe it's Council Leahy that chairs the facilities. It's either Council Leahy or Council Elliott, I'm not.
Mr. Houghey?
Thank you. I just want to, I think it's very important to bring up, we can constantly look at the city and say, hey, everything's broke over here. It's real easy for us because a lot of things are broke. But the fences around our schools and stuff, I believe that's the school's, the city's responsibility. But we recently had some messages sent to, I know I got one, that they found a hypodermic needle near a pre-K school around the leaves. We can't blame the city for cleaning around our schools, or cutting our grass, or getting rid of the leaves. The only people that we can blame is ourselves. Now, I know our custodians are doing a really good job. We're about, number, we visited 18 schools, and I'm very impressed on how clean some of the schools are getting. But with that said, we have to do a better job when it comes to landscaping, because I believe, Mr. Nutter will correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we're in charge of landscaping and cutting grass and getting rid of leaves, because those are where the real bad things are hidden, under the leaves. And some student did bring that to somebody, and I was really concerned about that. So I think this motion, by the way, was great, and we have to focus, maybe send a little message to Mr. Underwood that, I know it snowed out now, but we gotta get rid of the leaves. Every year, we have to be clean. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Would my colleagues mind if I just make one comment from the chair? This is, one of the things that was glaring to me about this report is that we have one school that has two playgrounds, and we have two schools that has no, no playgrounds. And then, as Ms. Martin mentioned, we have schools with playgrounds nearby, but because of the condition, the children can't access those playgrounds. So I think when we look at the district as a whole, and we look at things like equity and making every school a first choice, and the impact that having an outdoor play space can have on a child when they get that 15 minutes of recess that we have fought to make sure that they all get as a minimum, that they get to go outside and enjoy it, I think that does fall back on us to make sure. So we've got two schools, and I think, in Mr. Nutter's motion, he asked for additional details. I want to know what those schools are, who those schools are, and to start looking at what we need to do as a school committee and working with our city partners to make sure that all our children have access to an outdoor play space. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you. In one of our visits to the McAvenue School, which is diagonally across the street from Father Maguire, it's too dangerous to cross that street to get there, so they don't utilize Father Maguire. It's too dangerous to bring the kids over. That's what we were told. Isn't that what we were told? They even looked into the, what would it cost to put a walkway over, and that was prohibitive. That was off the table right away. But that's, that's, that was what we were told.
Aren't there lights at that cross? There's, there's lights there.
There are lights there. There are lights there.
Okay. Should we just go to the next one?
Just one last thing. The Washington School, I think that was built about the same time Betsy Ross made the flag, okay? And I mean this, when we visited that school, I've never seen a group of kids so excited in my life, and they were in a gymnasium, it's one of the smallest in the city. And the whole school was almost in that room having a blast.
They were.
And it's one of our older schools. It's amazing. I'm not sitting here when I say we found that needle, you know, that's just, we have to clean our own properties. I'm sick, you know, and I'm not sick of yelling at the city, because more than, there's a few people yelling at them now about maintenance. But we do have to clean around our schools. We need to do that. This year, I want to see them as clean as they've ever been, and I'm gonna push Underwood as hard as I can on that issue. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
So the next item is a response to my motion of December 19th regarding the work of the Citywide Family Council. We have a number of documents, and I believe they have prepared a presentation for us. I would welcome Rebecca Duda from the Family Center.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. What the school committee has in front of you, you have two, two reports. One is more detailed. It outlines from the beginning the process of revitalizing the Citywide Family Council. It's a detailed timeline. I know most of you have been involved in the process, especially at the kickoff event back in September. But the council has been very busy in between all, all of this time. So you have that information. But we also have, from Project Learn, Shamira Rivera to present a presentation to you summarizing the work of the council. And a member of the leadership from the Citywide Family Council, a parent, Beth Trapani. So I'd like to introduce both of them so they can do the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca, and thank you for having us. My name is Shamira Rivera, and I work at Project Learn as the alumni and engagement coordinator. And with me are a few of our leadership, and you'll see their names in a little bit. Beth Trapani will be presenting with me, so I'll just scroll through here. This is a quick agenda, I'm not gonna bore you with it, but who we are, our outreach, and our goals, and then something exciting that you'll be invited to. So let me just get past that to our leaders. And Beth's actually gonna speak on this slide.
Hi, sorry. Hi, Beth Trapani. And I just want to introduce some of our fellow members of our leadership team. You'll see some of the names on here. We have Louis Fosse-Davon with us, and Daruth.
Drouf.
Drouf. Sorry. Nicole Bernier. And then our, Katerina is our staff, your part-time staff, right? Yep. And so these are the members of our leadership team, and we've got together three times now since December, since we first kind of got swept into being on the leadership team. And we've got more folks than everyone could be here tonight. And the leadership team is taking on an active role in organizing upcoming parent engagement events for the Citywide Family Council and include outreach to parents and community members. And we're also working to educate each other in different aspects of the schools and different issues that are coming up. This is a really diverse group of family and community members. It's not just parents, it's community members, it's folks whose children have graduated. We have teachers, we have leaders, we've got all sorts of, all sorts of people coming. And everyone's really, really engaged in this process.
Awesome. So I'm just gonna quickly, some, this might be a little bit familiar to some of you. I know that we had a presentation on community engagement in the fall. But this initiative, the Citywide Family Council came out of an initiative called Your Voice Matters. And it is a community engagement initiative that started in 2017, funded partially by a grant through the Nellie May Education Foundation. And many of you, I believe all of you actually came to our kickoff this summer, which was, this fall, which was part of Your Voice Matters and the Citywide Family Council. But with this initiative, we've engaged over 1,000 folks in the city, which has been amazing. We have a diverse coalition of over 75 community members, teachers, parents, as Beth alluded to. Jackie Doherty is on our coalition as well. We did host, when we first kicked off, we hosted 14 community circles. And those are really listening sessions. So we were in places like the Y, CMAA, I believe Girls' Inc. So there were a lot of community conversations, where we actually invited parents, teachers, students to tell us what's been your experience with the schools? What has been good? What has been challenging? How does your school communicate with you? So basically, just trying to understand what are the priorities? And of all of those conversations, what we really found were there are some pretty major themes, actually. There were things like communications and schedules, cultural competency, language access. So all this stuff might be familiar to you, outside-of-school opportunities, how parents are engaged, how students are engaged, and our students have access to leadership opportunities, early childhood education, and college and career opportunities. So pretty major themes, but they kept coming up over and over again, which we found pretty exciting, the sorts of things that we were concerned about over at Project Learn and through Nellie May, our parents and families were also concerned about. Another great thing about this grant was it actually allowed us to build capacity. So through the grant, we were able to train facilitators, students, parents, and community members to facilitate community conversations. And we're continuing to do that type of work with our Nellie May coaches through the end of this year. And then the next slide's just some photos from some of our forums. I just want you to see, we're really trying to get out into the community, so we're in different spaces. We've hosted meetings at the Senior Center, the Lowell Community Health Center. A few of our schools have been really amazing and opened up their schools to us. Our principals have been extremely supportive. So our council meetings have actually been in our local schools, which has been amazing. And now I'm going to introduce to you Daruff, I believe. Are you doing this one? No, Beth's going to do this one?
Yes, that's me.
All right. So Beth's going to tell you what, what is the Citywide Family Council?
I'm sorry, we're the Traveling Road Show. Of course, I'm losing my voice. All right. So the, the Citywide Family Council is a, we're kind of a formal and informal group of family members, educators and community members who are getting together to voice their concerns and help give input into the Lowell Public Schools' student experience and community experience. And we're doing this because we know that strong, engaged families and communities make strong, engaged schools and it makes a great community for us. So everyone believes in Lowell, believes in Lowell Schools is a real integral part of the school, the city community. And our purpose is we're hoping to advise Lowell Public Schools, whether it's staff, whether it's the school committee like yourselves, on issues that are coming up from the family and the community and help to find solutions for problems and boost engagement with our family and our community members around school issues. All right. Daruff's going to talk about some of the communication issues.
I thought these were going to be clickable, so we're scrolling there.
Hi, good evening. So the last time we met, it was, we were talking, we brought up three issues that came up that was really important to the leadership group and we met about communication with schools, Lowell Public School, for the before-school, after-school programs. And so we kind of broke up into subgroups, had that discussion. One group had that discussion about just communication in general and how parents and families are informed about these programs. And it was a really good discussion, I have to say. I was in that subgroup and we had a lot of community organizations that really chimed in and gave us some feedback on some things, extra things that we could do as, as a group to really encourage and encourage the school system to participate in informing parents. Another group that we met was the Parent University. Basically that was just to have a program to aid and encourage assist families in engagement and support for their child's education. And so I wasn't in that subgroup, but I have to say, the communication about this topic was ongoing. So I, I mean, I'm getting emails, I think, right now about it. So it's really, it's great to see follow-through after these conversations. And the third group that met talked about an organizational map that could help families into knowing who to contact, what for, and kind of a chain system where parents are able to navigate the school system. And I think that a couple of you guys are really still working on that. So that's what we've been, what we discussed last time. Let's scroll through. Oh, is this me again? I think it is. Yeah, so, so I'm new to this. This is really new. So we met with, with everybody just, just for the past couple of months. I feel like there's been really substantial gains in really involving all the important stakeholders in this community. However, we do have notes in, I believe in your notes, going back into June about what the, the Citywide Family Council meetings have been about. And so again, just really, it's just September was the kickoff and then you can actually see the minutes and details about the meetings following that until now.
Okay. Sorry. I don't know who's next. Here, we can keep going. Yeah, so at that kickoff, I think everybody was there. There were over 200 folks in the room. It was incredible. So thank you for everyone being able to attend that. Oh, that's you.
All right. So some of the future plans that have come up and some things that folks would like to be engaged in going forward is just continuing to build any sort of collaborative partnerships. We have some of our leadership team members who have been working hard to reach out to the PTOs and school site councils and other school-based leaders to help build those connections and help build communication networks. And sometimes they operate a little bit in isolation, but then also to help bring people and help facilitate folks bring concerns to you as a school committee as well. And we want to have, build in a framework and not so much a formal process, but a better understanding of how people can engage and give feedback on our public schools and, and to get, make sure that we get a broad spectrum of voices engaged in the process, that it's not a few family members or a few leaders who are comfortable going to the school committee meetings, but that we bring in new folks or that we have new networks and new ways to reach out through the community. And we've had some really great suggestions from our family members about how to reach into the community and engagement. And one of the great things, I want to throw this in for the, all of the events, is there's been childcare available and children have been welcomed if there's not formal childcare. And I think that's been huge for me being able to attend. I have a few young children and they're never the only kids there. So I hope, I'm going to throw in a little plug for any search process or events going forward for the superintendent. Family-friendly is huge, I think, for families being able to come and to feel welcome and able to participate.
So we want to chat quickly about how we ensure that this work is sustainable. So as I mentioned, it's funded in part through a grant with the Nellie May Education Foundation. So that's actually a three-year, $25,000 grant and we are in our third year of that grant. Project Learn has done some additional fundraising and received some private donations to help supplement. The Lowell Public Schools' district staff has also been instrumental in ensuring that this work continues. And we've received some additional in-kind support from many of our community organizations and partners. And all told, the total cost of the program is closer to $47,000 a year and so a lot of that additional funding has, we've had to find it to match the work. And a good $25,000 to $30,000 is really what's needed to deliver at least the minimums. And we have been really fortunate with the Nellie May Education Foundation to have some amazing coaches and this group has been fortunate to receive some additional training from them. So that does end after this year. So we're trying to figure out, how do we ensure sustainability? So it's another issue that our Citywide Family Council has been engaged with.
All right. And then going forward, you know, other than money, except we're rolling in it here, right? But other, going forward, we really appreciate your support in, in welcoming us to present on our work so far from the school committee. And we also are looking forward to more support from district staff and, and school-based staff in, in getting the word out to parents, getting the word out to family members, getting the word out to community members, so that we can make sure that we have a broad range of participants as possible at these events. And I know many of you have attended the events. I know we've had teachers attend events. I know Superintendent Durkin has joined us as well, which is awesome for the families to see they may not otherwise have a chance to, you know, get to speak about their concerns with other folks there. So, and, and we were the, we're also looking to build those strong partnerships with our existing networks that they're maybe not engaged in school policy issues, but they're still our family groups that have important points of view on our day-to-day running of our schools. That's our PTOs, our school site councils, our administrators, even the neighbors of our schools. I think, you know, if we improve, just to raise the point about the playgrounds, if we improve the playgrounds, it improves the neighborhood. It's not just the students, it improves the whole community. So we look forward to continued support on, on those fronts and any encouragement or sharing of the events going forward from anyone here would be most welcome.
Shamira Rivera. Yes. So you're invited. Our next Citywide Family Council meeting is at the end of this month. It's Feb., Tuesday, February 26th at 6:00 PM. The McCullough Elementary is hosting us on 570 Beacon Street in Lowell and our topic is diverse staffing. So you will notice that at least for this year, every meeting, we're, we're choosing a different topic so we can hit all of our major topics, but there will be time for working groups. So we're still going to keep working on the communication, the Parent University, but the topic this time will be diverse staffing. If you do have any questions or want to get involved, you can email Rebecca Duda here at the Family Resource Center. And we do currently have two websites. The initiative started through the funding with Nellie May. So we, we had launched this Your Voice Matters Lowell.org website, so it has a lot of the historical information and we're looking to get all of that onto our Lowell.K12 website under the Family Resource Center tab. So that's what that is. I don't know if we're allowed to ask if you have any questions, but if you have any questions.
I believe you can ask. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you for that wonderful presentation.
Thank you for having us.
Anyone have questions? Mr. Howie?
I just have a comment that you folks at Project Learn, sometimes the school committee gets bogged down with a lot of different issues, but I've got a good feeling about yous this year because I, I think we should promote Project Learn as much as we can. So I know they take donations, right?
We do and yes, thank you.
Well, and I do know how, how great of a job you guys do at Project Learn and I know they raised a lot of money over the years and we've, sometimes when you're in a seat like this, you deal with homelessness and all, all different types of issues and sometimes you forget important things like Project Learn. So this is an election year, maybe I'll try to crank up some of the politicians to donate some money to Project Learn because I think you're a great organization and thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. I, I just want to thank all of our parent leaders. You're amazing. The work that you've accomplished in a very short amount of time is, is really beneficial to our school district. So I commend you for that. I thank you. I encourage more families to come out and I'm grateful for, as Mr. Howie said, Project Learn and the Nellie May Foundation for helping this because I think the difference, and I'm really, really encouraged by, by this, the difference with this Citywide Family Council is it's the parents who are running it and initiating it and that's going to be so powerful. So I encourage more families to join us and I just like to go and listen because I learn something every time I go. So I thank you for that work. And Rebecca, on, on the school end, you've been a great support and we couldn't do it without you.
Thank you.
We'll leave that up so you guys don't forget the date.
So the next report is in response to the motion made by Jerry Nutter at the September 19th school committee meeting. Request padding is added to the walls of the Bailey School Gym for student safety. I don't know if we had any comments about the report. Ms. Turner, are you going to speak on it?
Yes, we, the director of facilities sought quotes and two were received. One was by CBS for $9,460 and the other was from Arsimento for $6,300.
So are we looking to make any move tonight, Mr. Nutter?
I don't believe we have the ability at this point, correct? We will consider it for, yeah, future budgets. Thank you.
And then next report is response to Mr. Nutter's motion of April 4th regarding a policy on service animals.
Yes, thank you. I have here with me Attorney Hall, who I'm appreciative, did some investigation into this and if you oblige me, I'd ask him to, to share with you his findings and recommendations.
Just briefly, members, I did survey a few communities and I think you can see there's some submissions from mass association of school committees. They do have a recommended policy. I would urge you to consider having a policy. I think it's just helpful for the school leaders to have something to refer to when they're making a decision to best protect the school department when assessing this important topic.
Thank you. Mr. Nutter?
Thank you for this information. May I suggest we refer this to the Policy Subcommittee for future discussion and coming forth with the motion?
Motion to refer this to the Policy Subcommittee by Mr. Nutter, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. Now we have the Business Office Update. Ms. Turner?
So the Business Office Update includes some minor budget updates, projections, human resource updates and miscellaneous. With the budget, I wanted to point out that we did complete the mid-year increases. I think this is important to note because I've heard comments that we're giving 3, 3, 3 as far as the raises, when in, when in fact, we're just now getting to a 4%. The first year, the net increase is only 1% based upon the mid-year increases. The second year, we will see a 4% increase. After the third year, well, during the third year, we'll see 7%. We do not get to a 9% increase until July 1st of 2000, the 2020-2021 school year. So if you net that or if you average that between the four years, that's 2.2% that we've actually given to the teachers. I just wanted to point that out. Then I wanted to let you know about the Kriegen Studio. We had some equipment failure. Luckily, it happened right before the city was meeting to discuss their PEG funding and PEG budgeting. So we did request funds and we were able to submit a three-year plan on Thursday and again, a modified one on Tuesday that I believe his name is Mr. Wilkins, was able to prepare for us. So we made it in time for the budget request for the city.
If we could just, and I thank you, I, I had seen this last week and I had reached out as soon as I saw it, but you did supply me some additional information that I think everyone should be brought up to date on and, and that is that a, the main server, there was a power outage or a power surge at the high school. The lights went out, the power came back on. The server did not power back up. The server is 12 years old. They contacted the company. The company would no longer support that server. It is outdated. The cost to replace that one is approximately $71,000. There is a second server that puts, basically helps to keep Channel 22. Mr. Howie mentioned last week how Channel 22 had been blank. That second server, which is needed in conjunction with the first one, is also at the end of its usefulness and also needs to be replaced. That's going to cost an additional roughly $30,000. So that's where the $100,000 comes from. The other concern that, that I have in this is I'm not sure what is working right now. I don't believe, I mean, somehow they get Channel 22 to show kind of like all of our schools. It's almost like a slideshow presentation, but there's no live recordings or anything else, so I'm not sure how they're doing daily announcements. My other concern, it is, was brought to my attention, we have one producer and one teacher on staff. The producer is going out on paternity leave for 12 weeks. So I'm not sure what's happening with that program for the next 12 weeks of school where we don't have functioning equipment and we don't have anyone to teach it or, or to do any of the production. Do we have a plan in place? Do you know, Mrs. Durkin, if we have any plan? Because I really unfortunately don't believe that the city is going to be able to come up with that $100,000 before the next fiscal year.
So I know that Ms. Turner has been in communication with the, with the city several times relative to it and I'm sure she'll be hearing soon as far as, you know, if there's any funding. But as far as there would need to be a substitute that would fill Mr. Wilkins while he was out.
But if there's nothing for them to learn on, if the equipment, sorry, like what are we doing with these students? Is, you know, can, can?
I think it will determine, it will have to determine what specifically the timeline is, which will determine what, what the, what the whole plan is. So I can communicate with Ms. Bustin and see, give you some more information on that.
If we could also reach out to Lowell Telecommunications to see if there's anything they can do to assist us?
We have done so. I believe Ms. Desmond did that last week and we have not heard back yet. I don't want to misspeak.
Oh, that was a different motion. Okay.
It was on, it was on another motion around assisting. So, but, but it would be, how can they assist us? So.
All right. Well, I'm sure the city, once they, they find out about this, I, I know a couple of councilors will be pursuing this to see if they can also help us to see what's going on. So, thank you.
The next item was to update you on the projections. As I indicated last week, I'm going to keep bringing updated information about the changes in key areas like out-of-district tuition, transportation and those areas. Being that I presented that last week, this week I only included an update on the use of Facilities Revolving Fund. As you know, the original budget had $500,000 of offsets budgeted. We reduced that to reflect the $300,000 that is historical, you know, that the historical data supports. For a while there, I wasn't thinking we were going to make 200, but per the attached spreadsheet that I did include with all of the renters, we have now reached 265,000. So we're still not at the 300,000, but we're, this is far closer than what I originally anticipated. So this is good news.
Ms. Nutter?
Thank you. How are we doing with collecting some of the, I know you had brought a concern to us about some collecting from people who hadn't paid. Are we getting any response?
That's why this has increased because we did collect, we have a really strong person handling this and she's making collection calls and collection emails and we are going to implement different, you know, changes. The superintendent recommended- The superintendent recommended that I reach out and ask about the credit card policy that we just learned about with the science club opportunities. So, we did reach out to the CFO to find out if the people can pay with the credit card, and we're also going to implement with your approval after we draft this, but possibly doing a quarterly billing where they lose the rental rights if they don't pay on a quarterly basis. That will, you know, stop people from not paying, so...
Encourage them to pay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hoi?
Since we're talking about that, making people pay, have we, has anybody looked into making sure everybody's paying the right amount?
Actually, that's, we did do a study, and that was, I did bring a draft, but I want to bring a more thorough report now that everything's settling down. But we did find that there were inequities. We do see that there are, we are all for the organizations for students, and we understand that, but there have been a couple of places that say they're nonprofit, but then you see it's a for-profit when you look on the website, things like that. So, we wanted to implement systems where the 501(c) status is required upfront, but, you know, show us your nonprofit status. Another concern was that sometimes youth organizations could rent fi, not rent, but reserve five schools. So, although they are doing it for the students, they're collecting a fee, but they're not paying us, so we don't know how to handle this. We don't want to take away activities for students, but we also know that we're losing five schools. We're not getting revenue for those five schools. So, we have to find a way of showing that they're not really getting a profit or keeping the money they're collecting from students. But I was going to draft something and bring that to you so that you can help decide where you want to go.
Thank you.
The next item is just the HR audit findings. I wanted to give you a response, being that that was done right when we were both taking over the positions. So, I wanted to say that one of the key things, one of the key findings was proposed org structure. It would be great if we could do everything they said, but unfortunately, we would need that in other departments as well, like finance and payroll and retirement. So, the proposed org structure is not, it's luxurious. So, to update you on what we are currently doing, we are in the process of interviewing for the HR clerk now. We, I did meet with Mr. Toobielli from Leap Network today, and we concentrated on, one, the job description. He's going to review it and make sure that it's, includes all that it should include. But that was based on where do we want this role to go, and I wanted it open-ended enough so that whatever we do get, if you choose, if we find a superstar that's great with recruitment, then maybe I can maintain the retirement and vice versa. I think it should evolve with the new team, so I wanted, I wanted to suggest that it's open-ended enough to allow for that. He also strongly recommended that we consider the title. He thought we may lose potential candidates by keeping it as an HR director. Some other titles that they have used is Assistant Superintendent of HR or Chief of HR. The third was the salary range. If we do consider options, what I had suggested to him while he's reviewing the job description is to give me two different options so that I could bring it to you the following week while he's currently doing passive recruitment. So, it's not that we would delay the process. He's already begun the process of reaching out to people in this field. Now that you suggested a personnel committee, I'm not sure if, are you allowed to bring two topics on the agenda for next week if we poll? Because this would be something I could bring to you. We're meeting next week, our second meeting next week. So, okay. So, I'll bring that. The second part, the second finding that they focused on in that HR audit was communications. I think that we've definitely improved communications. We have the mindset that even if we don't have a concrete answer for the staff, we like to say, this is where we stand. We're researching it so that they don't think they're just not being heard or no response. We focused on the frustrated groups, like the retirees, being that they're a big, we have a great backlog on that. We're sending out information blasts to them. We're offering the retirement workshop. We actually might have to change venues because that, yeah, that we have, the room only holds 50, and we're already at 46, plus the people that are presenting, which there's more than four of us. Because one of the other areas of increased communication is that I'm including the city HR department, being that it's one-stop shopping for the retirees. So, Mary Calery, the city's HR director, will join us and help us present this. We've also offered meetings to the administrative assistants, formerly known as clerks, so that they can know of all the changes and all the improvements and, you know, keep them informed. We've had principal meetings to discuss and hear their input on the budget issues. We've increased communications with the schools with student activities. All in all, we are doing, every time we find a broken or a lack of, a broken system or a lack of communication, we try to implement something immediately. So, the communications have improved. Workplace and technology was another one of their findings. I just wanted to let you know that Munis has all of the functionality that they were suggesting. So, we have an investment analysis review being done by Munis, where also we've, you know, spoken to the unions about things that we wanted to change, like going paperless. The city has gone paperless in 2016. Once we go paperless, people will start to be able to go online and see all of their own stuff. They don't have to go through HR or city HR. They'll be able to do all of it on their own just by utilizing Munis. So, we're speaking with the union about all of these other updated changes. Again, it's, we're improving the technology, utilizing what we currently have. The next finding was hiring diversity. As you know, we just hired a recruitment firm. They are minority-owned, and they are going to focus their search for the HR director with diversity recruitment as their focus. And the exit interview. If we don't have staff, we definitely can implement surveys because surveys still will collect the reasons why people leave certain schools or things like that. So, we're currently researching that. We're hoping that the new person, the new HR director, will, you know, decide and implement. So, the other area is miscellaneous. I just wanted to let you know that we did do the food service bid. Yesterday was the mandatory pre-conference where they come and ask whatever questions they want. February 25th is the bid opening date, and that will be done at the, at the proqument office at City Hall.
Thank you. Mr. Nutter?
The food service bid is for the whole district, currently held by Aramac. Is it that contract? And so, we have to put that out every, what, three years or something? Is that what it is?
Mm-hmm.
So, did we get, I mean, any people at the meeting yesterday?
Yes.
Oh, good.
And again, they'll open, we'll open all of them on the 25th through the proqument office. We went through the proqument office so that we can make sure all of the...
Correct legal things.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I believe the next item is the grant update and award.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to give you an update that our 21st Century Learning Centers received an enhanced programs for students on IEP's grant. This is gonna provide $40,000 additional dollars to support our special education students at the Maury, Robinson, McCullough, and McAvenue Schools to allow them to really fully participate in the after-school and before-school programming. So, that's good news, and I want to commend Carolyn Rochelot and our school staff who helped to write this grant and secure the funding.
Thank you. And the next item is enrollment figures.
This is your regular enrollment numbers?
And a report on motions?
And the report on motions for your consideration. If you have any questions relative to our documented notes and whether or not we've completed things to your liking, let us know.
Mr. Nutter?
I just wanted to kind of update, you know, there's been a motion out there about looking at the maintenance of effort agreement, and we did, Ms. Turner and I, with the approval of the mayor, had an initial meeting. We've got some ideas. One of the, you know, one of the realizations that has hit me at looking at this maintenance of effort agreement, and it would be, you know, I know there are people who think that we shouldn't have to pay to have the parking lots snow cleared at our schools. But if the city doesn't do that, we'd be on the hook to hire somebody to do that. Same thing for picking up our trash, having school nurses, having SRO officers in our buildings. If we didn't partner with the city, and the city is allowed under the Education Reform Act to charge for these costs. Now, we can look at things in a couple of different ways. We can look at the formulas as they presently stand, and in that way, we do not know as a district before the school year begins what our cost of maintenance of effort because of the way the formulas are written. So, in talking to a couple of other communities, some of them go with flat rates, and that way you know every year what your cost of maintenance of effort is going to be. It isn't something that's been done here, but it's something that may be worth exploring. So, we kind of agreed, we're gonna have, the next meeting we're gonna have is going to be with the mayor and Mrs. Durkin, and to go over looking at those options. So, I just want my fellow committee members to know, it's been talked about often, it is finally, you know, starting to pick up some traction. We're gonna have some scheduled meetings. We're gonna meet with the city side and hear their concerns also, and try to keep moving that forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? So, the next is the, I'm sorry, Mr. Hoi?
Just a question for you, to Mr. Nutter. I thought we were gonna form, or didn't say in your motion, to form a subcommittee on that?
That still may happen. Right now, Ms. Turner and I and the mayor, but the mayor hasn't been able to make it. But he has asked Ms. Turner and I to do some groundwork. So, the next meeting will involve myself, the mayor, Mrs. Durkin, and Ms. Turner.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the personnel report?
Yes, this is a report of the retirements, resignations, promotions, and new hires.
Thank you. Motion to accept reports of the superintendent 9.1 through 9.9 as reports of progress by Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Dakota. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. 10 under new business has been deferred. Then 10-2, we have a budget transfer. Ms. Turner, do, I'm sorry. Is that...
I just moved to approve.
Oh.
We've already...
Motion, I'm sorry? Budget transfer, oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the budget transfer of $10,061.47 by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Hoi. Roll call.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Darity?
Yes.
Six sheaths, one absent, approved.
And under professional personnel, the UTL donated sick days. The members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby donate 20 sick day, sick leave days to Patricia Williams, Lowell High School teacher. Motion to approve by Mr. Hoi, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Darity?
Yes.
Six sheaths, one absent, approved.
And under professional personnel, the UTL donated sick days. The members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby donate 20 sick day, sick leave days to Patricia Williams, Lowell High School teacher. Motion to approve by Mr. Hoi, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Darity?
Yes.
Six sheaths, one absent, approved.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get, did you get this letter too?